Thanks for being here. I'd just like to remember a couple of individuals who have passed away in the recent weeks. First one is Tom Fleming. Tom worked many years on the board at Turning Point. I had the pleasure of serving with him many years ago. He also did a lot of activities down in the Newport redevelopment, on the waterfront, and he was a voice to keep the waterfront, he was a voice to keep the, to redevelop the waterfront and not let it go. And also, I'd like to remember Cynthia Hu, who died this past week, and she worked for many, many years at the, I think for 30, 35 years at the Salvation Army. She was a mainstay down there, and she's also the mother-in-law of a fireman Kenneth Posikin. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City clerk, do the roll call for the city council meeting on the 24th, 2014.
Counselor Cameron.
Present.
Counselor Connell.
Present.
Counselor Cronin.
Present.
Counselor Agarman.
Here.
Counselor Junta.
Present.
Counselor Harquist.
Present.
Counselor Hirsag.
Here.
Counselor Kinsey.
Here.
Counselor Tanta.
Present.
Counselor Vogel.
Here.
Counsel President O'Brien.
Here.
All present.
Any late filed items?
There are two items on the counselor's desk. First would be the appointment for the Human Resources Director Appointment Number Four, and the next is simply additional information for the application for the Flag Day race for the Public Safety Committee.
Motion to waive the rules and accept these late filed items.
Set. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public comment? Greg Ogden?
Yes.
You signed up for public?
Yes, I'm here for a licensing board appointment. I think most of you probably know me from local Pulse Radio. I'm the producer, worked with Joe DBA, so I think we've had almost everybody here on the show at one time or another. I was asked by Brad Duffin if I would be willing to join the licensing board. Having been a member of a bunch of volunteer efforts in the past, I wanted to expand what I was doing in the city. I've been in the city 23 years. Both my son and daughter went through the school system here and have graduated from Newport High, and I would really love the honor to serve the city even more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Tracy Maynard?
Hey, everyone. I'm Tracy Maynard. I live here in Newport at 16 Doran Drive. I've been a resident for 15 years. I have a son in the school system currently in the seventh grade at the Knoc Middle School, and I'm honored to have received an offer for the Director of Human Resources position here at the city. So I believe you'll have my resume and contact information, and I'm happy to answer any questions about my role or my background in HR, if you have any. You also have my contact information should you want to contact me. I'll be starting on January 5th. I had to give some notice where I am currently in Boston.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayors comment?
Good evening, President O'Brien, members of the city council. Today, I wanted just to give you a few updates. First, I would like to recognize Kevin Hunt for, again, doing a tremendous job in organizing a special day for our veterans and, again, coordinated a wonderful event, and would like to thank the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and of course, members of the city council who were there to honor our veterans as well as the Newport High School Band, and also to recognize Michael's harborside for once again offering a full day of free meals for our veterans. It's a tremendous effort that they provide for veterans in our community. Reminder that the special election is scheduled for December 9th, and this election is to, for a ballot question, debt exclusion that will, that you voted for, the school building committee voted, the school committee voted, for us to be able to use $1.7 million in surplus from the Bresnahan project for the renovation and upgrade to the Knoc Mullen Field to replace the baseball field, the full-size baseball field that we displaced at Bresnahan, as well as upgrading the track, which is in terrible condition, and the drainage at the Fuller Field. On December 2nd, we have a public meeting for everyone in the community to come together upstairs at City Hall, where we'll be presenting more detailed information about both of those projects, and Lisa Reed will be presenting that. So please keep that in mind. Love to have all of you there in support of this initiative and certainly would appreciate your outreach to your constituents on this special election. Also would like to thank you for participating in our first joint meeting of the city council and school committee for, as ordered by the charter, as we, Evan, Ethan Manning presented a wonderful update, I think, of the city's finances, which is what the mandate of that particular meeting is, as we begin to move forward and prepare for FY '16 budget process. I think it was very helpful for us to be together into exchange and dialogue, and in addition, a small ad hoc committee was set up to look between the schools and the city at our fee structures. Last Monday night, the Legislative Commission on the Chapter 70 Formular had its first statewide meeting in Danvers. Would like to thank the city councilors who were present as well as the school committee members. Newport had, I think, a strong turnout, and school committee member, Mr. Bennon, as well as myself, were able to testify and address some of the longstanding issues with the Chapter 70 funding formula, which is particularly difficult in our community. The Kelly School Selection Committee has been established. Thank you, Counselor Agarman and Counselor Cronin, for agreeing to sit on that review committee of the proposals for the Kelly School, and that is scheduled for December 3rd. The Brown School, we've had over 100 responses to the Winter Street Associates feasibility study, and those are being coordinated. Had hoped they would be posted on the website by now, but I anticipate that they will be before the end of this week. The school committee has set up an ad hoc committee also because they feel that they need to do their due diligence regarding educational needs. So our work on the city in terms of moving forward on the adaptive reuse of the Brown School will continue on parallel tracks with the schools because the schools really want to look broadly at any educational needs that could be also added to the Brown School and feel they need to do that before they can take a vote to decommission the school, and then it would become the purview of the city council at that point. They anticipate to have that, results of that committee done by, at the latest, March 1st. Plum Island Water and Sewer were wrapping up the Phase One work that was done on the repair of the 16 hydrants and the metal samples that were taken and sent to the lab. We've had some difficulty out there with the trenches not being adequately prepped after closure, and so we've worked with the contractor, CDM Smith, and to have them make sure that the trenches are in good shape, especially as we now are closing up the process for the winter. Anticipate they'll be off the island by mid to late December. Landfill, as you know, were back in court the beginning of the month. They had come to agreement on the closure work that needs to happen, particularly on gases that are escaping from the liner, as well as repair to the flare. We'll be watching closely to ensure that they meet their timelines. Update was provided by DEP last week, and we will continue to monitor this, hopefully, last phase of the closure process there. Intermodal Facility Garage, we, in our process of moving forward, met with a team from Federal Transportation today. Things are definitely moving forward in this process. We have to make some amendments to some original documents that we submitted when we thought that it was going to be a much larger facility or on the other side of Titcomb Street. So we're working through some of those requirements. Design meeting met Friday, and then we are anticipating, hopefully, early January, that we will be able to do a public meeting, show you some renderings of design, and talk to you about where we are in the process. Things are moving forward with the $5 million from the state, which will be transferred into the Merrimack Valley, RTA, Regional Transit Authority, and we still will have a funding gap, but have been able to work out the potential without being able to secure additional revenue. We could bond against our parking revenues to make up that gap. If all goes well, we will be completing design this spring and breaking ground next Wishing you all a wonderful Thanksgiving and go Clippers. Thank you.
What's the end of consent agenda?
The consent agenda consists this evening of the approval of the minutes for November 10th, 2014. There are three communications. The first is the Flag Day 5K June 13th, 2015 Assistance Fund, Soldier Assistance Fund race. That, I should mention, is also related to the additional information that came in as a late file. Then Communication Number Two, that's to be referred to Public Safety. Communication Number Two is the Congregation Ahavis Akim Menora in Market Square, December 15th to the 24th. That has been approved a number of years. It's in for approval. Parac 2016 Fiscal Year appropriation is to be referred to Budget and Finance. There are two appointments. First reading, it's a reappointment. Noah A. Lushkin, 36 Plummer Ave., to the Planning Board until May 31st, 2019, and there's an appointment, Greg M. Ogden, 6 Merrill Street, to the Licensing Board until June 1st, 2018, and that is the end of the consent agenda.
What's the wish of the council?
Motion approved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Move on. Regular agenda?
Regular agenda. The first item up are the minutes of the NRA and City Council Meeting September 30th, 2014. They're in your packet as Communication Number Four.
Motion to amend?
Motion to approve first, then amend.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Agarman?
Yes, I saw this come across in the email, and apparently these minutes have already been approved by the NRA, but I just wanted, since so many of us attended and spoke, that we go through them as well, and we should do our own reading of this and correct any mistakes and then adopt them. And then I've been in contact with the Chair, Tom Solemy, and then they would do reconciling amendments. Just to get the record straight, it's such an important issue to the city, I thought I was worth reading. That's all. My own, if I may, my own amendment would be just to add a sentence that I, something I was urging the mayor's office to focus on the parking garage. That's all.
And where was that, with page?
It's the second paragraph, Mr. President, on page two. It would be immediately after the first sentence of that paragraph. He urged the mayor to, the mayor's office to focus on development of the parking garage. That would be my proposal.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may add something that I spoke, I'm not sure in what order, but if you want to add it to what I said on page two at the very top. In addition, I asked if they, as a group, NRA, seems to be taking a different form or function, and that would be that of a fundraising mechanism. I was wondering if that, there wasn't a clear answer given, but I was just bringing that to their attention, that they seem to be coming across as such. Thank you, sir.
If I might, Mr. President. So the language would be at the beginning of the second page and would state what?
I asked if the NRA seems to be taking on a fundraising role rather than as a true redevelopment authority.
I would accept that as a friendly amendment, just to keep this going.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Counselor Tanta.
Hope you'll also accept this as a friendly amendment. Just the paragraph where it has
-- What page are we on?
On page one, second paragraph from the bottom. Charlie Tanta said he would be in favor of an expansion of the park, interim expansion, and it says, "I would be hesitant about using CPA funds." That's not what I said. I supported the use of CPA funds.
That's a little different.
A little different.
A little different, hesitant and support.
Depends on interpretation.
Right.
And secondly, I did not think I said, I don't think I said that CPA money should be matched. I said it would be good if other funds could be raised. Matching them means that the CPA funds don't kick in until they are matched by other funds, so maybe that's a more linguistic, but at least.
Thank you. Except.
Counselor Junta.
I just wanted to note that my last name is spelled wrong.
What a surprise.
Mine's spelled right. Shocking.
Stolen, Larry G.
Yeah, is it a J?
I before you.
Except after.
As always.
Anything else? I think on mine, it said, Tom Brian said the residents of his ward do not support the garage because of the amount it would cost the city. I think, it was a long time ago, more, I forget, but I thought I said that I wouldn't, I couldn't, I don't think the residents of my ward would support paying for a garage when they have already put money forward for schools and a senior center. And I said, years ago, I was the deciding vote on Tremont Street, seven to four, because they couldn't give me an amount of money that would cost the residents. I said, "I have to know how much money it's going to cost the residents before I approve anything." I think that's what I said.
Yeah.
Friendly amendment.
Accepted, yeah.
Anything else? Motion to approve? Amended?
Motion to approve is amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Approved.
Mr. President? If I might, I will come up with the language, as I think we just amended, and send it out to those that wanted the amendments. Maybe you could send an email back, just to flood them.
Thank you.
So we proved amended, and now he's going to prove as amended, correct?
I think it was a motion to approve is amended.
Okay.
I think I did that.
Makes me happy. Move on, then. Need a motion to late file the mayor's update?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good. Appointment first reading. Continue.
This is, I hereby appoint subject to approval the following named individual as Human Resources Director. The term will expire January 1st, 2018. It's from the mayor to the present members of city council dated November 21st. It is regarding Tracy Maynard, 16 Doran Drive, Newport, Mass. There is attached here, too, a two-page resume.
Thank you. First reading. Motion to proceed and file, please.
So moved. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Appointed second reading.
Second reading is David V. Vine, 47 Marlborough Street, to the Conservation Commission until May 31st, 2016.
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Agarman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Harquist.
Yes.
Counselor Hirsag.
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Brien.
Yes.
We go on to orders. Order number one.
Order number one is as follows. "November 24th, 2014, that the Newport Water and Sewer Commission allow for adjustment of sewer billing charges to reflect water which is measured by the potable, excuse me, water meter, but which does not enter the city sanitary sewer system. This would revive a 1997 policy prohibits, prohibiting, second meters. Submitted Counselors Hirsag
I'll move to refer to the Committee on Public Utilities.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Roll call, please.
Roll call on the motion to refer to public utilities. Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Agarman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Harquist.
Yes.
Counselor Hirsag.
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
No.
Counselor Vogel.
No.
Counsel President O'Brien.
No.
Motion passes.
Order number two.
Order number two, dated November 24th. "That pursuant to General Laws 82, Section 21 and 32A, City Council hereby abandon and discontinue permanently a portion of Harnsh's way, a public way, shown on plan, a copy of which is on file with the City Clerk in the Office of Planning and Development, titled 'Two Ferry Road Discontinuance,' prepared by DGT Survey. Said portion of the way hereby abandoned and discontinued is bounded and described according to said plan. Said portion of Harnsh's way is hereby declared abandoned and is unused for ordinary travel, and the common convenience necessity no longer requires this portion of the way to be maintained in a condition reasonably safe and convenient for travel. City shall no longer be bound to keep such way or portion thereof in repair." Counselors O'Brien and Junta.
Motion to refer to planning and development.
Second. Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. We are going to discuss this at a public hearing on, just before our next city council meeting, which I believe is Monday, December 8th.
Correct.
We'll be meeting at 6:30. Just need to be posted 14 days' notice, which it has.
6:45.
6:45. Thank you.
6:45 by the next city council meeting? Yes. Public hearing on this and also another one. So why are we forwarding this to planning and development? Why can't we just table it until we have that hearing on? Does it have to be, go to planning and development? Or can we just approve it after, or disapprove it after the public hearing, next meeting?
I think you could keep it on the table, or you could put it in committee. Either way.
Mr. President, yeah, if we're gonna, if we're all gonna hear it, all 11 of us on the 8th, then probably be most efficient to not refer it to planning and development.
Keep it on the table.
So, I would probably go.
Let's draw my second. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to table?
Second.
Is it second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm sorry, who was the first? Thank you.
Well, four, second, so take your turn. Ordinances?
First ordinance, Section 13, 168, parking restricted on certain streets. No person shall park any vehicle in following streets or portions thereof. Court Street, on the westerly side from High Street to Washington Street, submitted Counselor Cronin.
Motion to refer to Public Safety.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion approved. Committee items. Budge and finance.
Nothing, Mr. President.
Will any of these be coming out before the end of the fiscal year, end of this year, I mean?
I think before the end of this calendar year. We're hoping to get a report on Human Resources.
But the others will just carry over?
Probably not on, not on one and two, not in the home rule petition, and probably not on the salaries.
So those will just carry over. Okay, thank you. Joint education?
Nothing, sir.
License and permits?
Nothing at this time.
What about the ones, any of those coming out in the next two meetings or one meeting?
No, two and three I'd like to carry over, one will.
Okay. Thank you.
Go away.
Neighborhood and city services?
I guess not.
You don't want to report on, nothing. That's good. Planning and development?
Mr. President, we'll be also, besides Harnsh's Way, discussing the Parker Street discontinuance also on December 8th, just before our next city council meeting, so that'll be a public hearing. And number two, the amendment for the Back Bay Neighborhood, we are having a joint meeting between, joint hearing between the Planning Board and Planning and Development Committee. That's next Wednesday, December 3rd, 7 o'clock, I think here or upstairs. I'm not sure whereabouts. So that'll be regarding that zoning amendment.
Thank you. Public safety.
Yes, Mr. President, three things coming out. First one.
You had to ruin everything for us, thanks.
Yeah, sorry. Motion to remove item one, multiple.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Connell.
Hey, Mr. President. This is a recurring event, and it's a walk. It's been signed off by each of the required departments in town, and it has its insurance certificate, and we voted 3-0 for approval.
Any others? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next.
Motion to remove item two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Counselor Connell.
Mr. President, we have a friendly amendment to add to this, just to make it work for the ordinance. So what we are proposing is, this is a handicap parking space at Emma Andrews Library, to change the wording to say, "One space in front of the Emma Andrews Library at 77 Purchase Street, beginning at a point 30 feet from the corner of Marlborough Street and Purchase Street."
Is there a second on that amendment? Second. Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Now we have the two, roll call.
Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Could we just read it one more time, please?
Yeah, you know, I think you have the language. I'll see what I've got. "One space in front of the Emma Andrews Library at 77 Purchase Street, beginning at a point 30 feet from the corner of Marlborough and Purchase Street."
Correct.
Counselor Vogel.
Wouldn't it be intersection of?
We debated that.
Do intersection.
I just.
Are you just allowing?
I think.
Counselor Harquist.
Are you just allowing more room for the corner? I'm trying to vision this in my head. I don't know what is with parking spots in my ward.
Yeah, we had to kind of quantify where it was going to be, so what we did was we did a parking stall, which is about 20 feet, which will give it right up to where the ramp is, so ramp back, so it's not blocking the ramp, but it's that first space. So, yeah, somebody can park behind it.
Thank you.
If I may, I do think corner is a better word, just because intersection could be misconstrued as, you know, the center point of the intersection. Everyone knows what the corner is.
Okay. Okay, now I'm very confused where we were, so.
So it now reads, I believe, to repeat, "One space in front of the Emma Andrews Library at 77 Purchase Street, beginning at a point 30 feet from the corner of Marlborough Street and Purchase Street."
Okay.
And we've got motion on the floor, shall I do a roll call on this?
Roll call, yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Agan?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Hartquist?
Yes.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
First reading passes.
Motion to remove Item Three, ladies night out.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President, again, this is a reoccurring event, this is probably the third year. We have all sign-offs from the various departments. Insurance waiver, and everything is in order with the new requirements. Yeah, it was a 3-0 voting, I think.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. That's it? Anything else? Nothing further. Public Utilities?
Yes, Mr. President. The item in committee will remain in committee for the time being. Related, the Board of Health held a meeting last Thursday evening. I thank the multiple counselors who attended that hearing, that discussion, I should say, it was less of a hearing and more of an open discussion. The Board of Health was interested in a hearing from residents and stakeholders involved, interested on both sides of either keeping or removing fluoride from our community water distribution system. And passionate, passionate arguments, both emotional and analytical, were made on, from both perspectives. And as it stands, the Board of Health has continued this discussion until a future point. At the same time, I've asked the City Clerk to inquire from legal counsel as to what the next step is, whatever the next step will be. It's ambiguous right now between the City Council and the Board of Health. Nobody really knows what the process should be, whatever the process will be. And so hopefully, legal counsel can take a look at state law and local votes of the past, try to figure out if we move forward, or whatever we move forward with, what that process will be. So for the time being, this item will stay in committee as a way of, if you will, keeping the Board of Health on its feet.
Rules Committee?
Nothing to report.
Good of the order. Counsel Connell?
Yeah, I would, just indulge me, if you may, for just a couple of minutes, because I want to bring your attention to an issue that was brought up probably twice tonight, and that is the parking garage that's, that's on everybody's mind. My goal of standing up and speaking is, is more to start a conversation and put us more ahead of the curve when we consider our parking needs moving forward and the issues that might arise in, in this. And so we're all aware of what's going on. I'm not standing here advocating for a garage, nor am I arguing against a garage. I'm just highlighting variables that we must consider if and when this plan moves forward. I want to pass the three major hurdles that I think the Mayor and her staff are dealing with right now. Those hurdles that I'm passing are first, assuming a deal can be reached with Newburyport Development, use of land, et cetera. Second assumption is the project receives $5 million promised from the state and another $2 million from the federal government. Again, assumption I'm bypassing. The third and final assumption is that the $7 million needed that has been promised meets construction costs. Or, in that assumption, is that the city of Newburyport decides to absorb whatever remainder of costs may be through additional outside resources or even through the city's own revenue streams. All of these three assumptions are surely not guarantees, but move us to more finite considerations, and that's what I, I actually want to just bring to everyone's attention tonight. We have approximately 800 parking spaces recognized as downtown used spaces. Roughly, the Waterfront Trust has about 64, Green Street has about 200, the NRA has about 374, Prince Lot and State Street lots combined have about 100, and the remainder of that is on-street parking. The City Council, or the city itself, including its boards, its commissions, its staff departments, and most importantly, us in this council, all the stakeholders in this, not to mention the NRA and groups like CAU. And we have decisions to made, to be made, some individually by different authorities or trusts or boards, but some collectively. And these have to be made, not in a vacuum, but with some real numbers. And I want people to think about these numbers prior to being put into a hurry-up offense. How many public spaces are needed in a garage to make it work in the city? That's the first question. How many spaces will remain on the NRA parcels if we build? That's, that's another important question. Even a finer brush is how does this impact our employee parking program that is currently on the waterfront? And will that remain on the water, or will that, will that program simply disappear? What will the cost of the parking in the garage be? And how will that impact us here in the city with our own pay lots? Who owns and controls the garage? Because if it isn't us, then somebody else is taking that revenue in. Who receives the receipts? Can we move forward on the waterfront if this cash flow goes elsewhere? Can a garage be used in winter-snow emergencies? The motivation that I have for starting this conversation is that planning is needed at all levels of the city, and to make this work and to see that it works for all of the city. I'm the council's representative to the Parking Committee, and I have requested that the Chair, who is our City Clerk, and also the Parking Clerk, make this a permanent agenda item on the Parking Committee's meeting agenda. The next meeting is December 4th at 7 o'clock in this room, and that's open to the public, but that, that will be a conversation starter there as well. I should also point out at that meeting, there might be another conversation starter about raising parking rates in the Waterfront Trust and NRA lots. This is also, there's also a thought of extending hours of enforcement, this affects the city side as well. I assume that if this is the case, it'll be fully vetted. I believe the NRA and City Agreement is up for renewal sometime in the spring, so this needs to be fully worked out before then. And then on another issue, but similar issue, at that meeting, I will be asking for input of some sort about the upcoming holiday season. I think that not only the city side in this council, but the Waterfront Trust and the NRA should all weigh in on if there's going to be a suspension of parking fees, and it should all be a united front and on the same page. So moving forward, those are the issues that confront not only the Parking Committee, which is ad hoc, but all of us. And I think that we have to look at some of these questions, not in a vacuum, but as real-time and real important questions that need to be answered before anything is done, because as we know with parking, when you throw a pebble in, the ripples affect everything else. So I just thank you for indulging.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything? Counselor Hensler?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Cronin just reminded me, as he's a liaison to that committee, I'm also the council's liaison to the Cable Advisory Committee. The CAC is currently amid negotiations with Comcast, as our contract with Comcast expires next year. A number of meetings have been held with a, with an attorney, who we've been working with, who has successfully negotiated with Comcast and with other communities. I will update the City Council at a future meeting, presumably in December. We are beginning to plan what will be two or three public hearings with Comcast representatives so they can learn from members of the community how beneficial Comcast services are and/or specifically how beneficial Port Media services are. Because Port Media as an institution, and more directly as a, Port Media is our public, educational, and governmental entity that is defined in the contract we currently have with Comcast. And as we work on renewing it, the idea from our attorney and from the commission in general is to have members of the community come to either City Hall and/or the School Department, perhaps both locations, Comcast will be there at both locations, and people can share how beneficial Port Media has been to them and/or how beneficial or not beneficial Comcast has been to them. So I will announce our schedule when it is scheduled. Thanks.
Anyone else? Take the motion to adjourn?
Some move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Yep. I'm gonna, sorry, I didn't return your call. Give me the niac and the tens, hopefully.
Dyke, thanks. I'm, I'm gonna head out to Rochester to see if they have snow, too. We, as you know, we're gonna have the recount on Tuesday. And you don't know this, but on Monday at 9:30, there will be a pre-recount, counting of the ballots into blocks of 50.